Okay. Ready to go? Good evening. I'd like to call to order this special meeting of the Wall Township Board of Education for Monday, January 31st, 2022. Please stand for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smythe, could we have sunshine statement and roll call, please?
Yes, this is a special meeting of the Wall Township Board of Education, which adequate notice under the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by a notice to the Asbury Park Press, Co-Star Township Clerk's Office, the All Wall Township Public Schools and the Board Administration Office on January 27th, 2022. I'll take a roll call. Mr. Buffa?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Hodnett?
Here.
Mr. Malev?
Here.
Mr. Nassar?
Here.
Mr. Sam Flippo?
Here.
Ms. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Wondrek?
Mr. Adenizio?
Here. Thank you. All right, at this time, I will open it up for public comment.
Okay. Good evening, Dr. Handerhand and board. Alyssa Hughes, Cedar Street. My kids are at Allenwood School. I am here tonight to follow up on two subjects I have written to you about and not received a response on. The first topic pertains to close contact quarantine data. To refresh your memory, I pointed out two meetings ago that towns are tracking the data on close contact quarantines. As I explained, Marlborough discovered only 1.46% of those close contacts go on to test positive for COVID, resulting in the unnecessary quarantining of 1,700 of their students. I have reached out to you on the following dates: January 5th, January 11th, January 12th, January 13th, and January 27th. I have not received a response from you or the Board President on whether or not we are tracking this data. I and many others would like to know. Our children should not be forced to quarantine if there's no data to support your policy. Other districts have pivoted on this antiquated policy because it has unnecessarily been removing healthy children from school and has no statistically significant impact on reduction in transmission. So, do you have the data? I would appreciate a response. The second topic I am here to address with you is of the utmost importance. I reached out to our Board President Ralph Adenizio on Thursday, January 27th. I have not received a response. I know it was a blizzard weekend, but I am following up on that. I would like to know if the Board has a position on the masking policy as we approach the sunset of Governor Murphy's Executive Order Number 281. Are there plans to give parents back choice and enact a mask optional policy? Or will the district continue to mandate masks even when the EO 281 expires and we have local jurisdiction? I think it's important that the Board communicates their position soon, and I am hoping it's consistent with the August 3rd letter that the district sent out with plans to go mask optional for the 2021 through 2022 school year prior to Murphy squashing local rule. On January 18th, the Marlborough Board of Ed voted nine to zero to pass parental choice resolution, which states they will support giving parents the choice to determine if their children will continue to wear a mask in school. Rumson's Board of Education notified families on January 26th that they are in the process of writing a mask optional policy in anticipation of the sunset of 281. Our children are suffering over senseless mask mandates. Their ears are sore, they can't see smiles, they're anxious and depressed, they can't speak freely during snack. They are told to watch a movie or play on their iPads instead of socializing freely. Some, my child, are scolded to pull their mask up if they finish snack before their eight-minute timer goes off. God forbid they have a true mask break. Mainstream has finally admitted that we've been saying what we've been saying all along. These cloth masks are useless. The narrative is falling apart, and everyone knows it. Please give parents the choice... The option, I'm sorry, to mask their children if they want to. With a cloth mask, an N95 mask, a Halloween mask, I really don't care. But please also empower the rest of us to make the decision whether a medical device is appropriate for school use. I recognize you have been powerless to stop the masking under Murphy's mandate. I acknowledge that. You've said that all along, but we know it's coming to an end, or God willing, it's coming to an end. You will be back in a position of power soon, I hope. How do you want to be remembered by these children? They may not know your names now, but they will remember the adults who failed them, and they will also remember those who advocated for them and protected them. You can choose to have a positive legacy as a superintendent and as Board of Education members during one of the most trying times by proactively showing up for them once this emergency ends and going mask optional. So I ask you, what will the policy be? And are you working on it right now? It's coming. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Oh, Ellie Razik, Wall Township. Good evening, Dr. Handerhand. During the June 15th, 2021 Board of Education meeting, you declared that you are charged with the health and safety of students and staff across the district. At that same meeting, I appeared before this Board to share the disturbing information I learned about the COVID vaccine side effects. At this... At that time, there were 5,888 COVID vaccine deaths recorded in the CDC's VAERS database. For those who don't know, VAERS is the CDC's Vaccine Adverse Event Recording System. As of January 21st, 2022, the numbers of death in that database stands at 22,607 with over 1 million adverse reactions, recorded and over 40,000 permanently disabled. If anyone would like to check these numbers, go to openvairs, V-A-E-R-S, dot com. What's even more disturbing is that it's estimated that these numbers only represent between 1 and 10% of the total numbers. Why are we not hearing about this? If we are strictly adhering to CDC guidelines, why are we ignoring CDC VAERS data? I see this as the elephant in the room. You say there is nothing you can do, and I disagree. If you are charged with the health and safety of all students and staff, it is your duty to be fully informed as it relates to the measures you are enforcing. Some facts that should be taken into consideration. We know the masks don't work and they're causing harm. No data or studies have been provided to parents to justify long-term masking. If you can't produce concrete proof in writing that masks work, parents should be given a choice. We know the PCR tests often produce false positives, yet we're relying on what is potentially fraudulent medical data to base critical decisions about who must quarantine and miss school. We know frontline professionals are walking away from their livelihoods because they're seeing firsthand what's happening regarding vaccine adverse reactions. We're seeing protests break out worldwide opposing these mandates. We know the vaccines do not prevent transmission nor do they prevent illness, yet we're discriminating against those who are not vaccinated as if they're more infectious and basing preferential quarantining decisions favored to vaccinated students. Given the adverse event numbers, why would we be incentivizing parents to get these kids vaccinated, their kids vaccinated? We know children are falling behind and are struggling. Surely, you must ask yourself if the measures are worse than the illness, which is mutated to be similar to the common cold. Last week, Senator Ron Johnson held a hearing called Second Opinion, where he brought in whistleblowing doctors, nurses, and other professionals investigating this event. Here are a few of the findings from that hearing. Doctors confirmed early treatments worked but have been suppressed. Doctors shared that their licenses were threatened if they spoke out against the vaccine and/or provided mask exemptions. Frontline nurses shared how hospital protocols like ventilators, isolation, and approved medications like remdesivir were causing more deaths than COVID. They also confirmed safe existing therapies were suppressed in the hospitals. An attorney, Thomas Renz, R-E-N-Z, shared disturbing Department of Defense data showing tenfold increase in neurological disorders, increase in miscarriages, and cardiac episodes following vaccination. Also, 70% of new COVID cases and 60% hospitalizations are vaccinated. Maybe it's time we return the ESSER funds so we can free the children from these sketchy mandates. It appears you are remaining willfully ignorant to these disturbing facts if you are not responding to them. If you say you're charged with our children's health and safety, then embody that. Walk your talk. We are not considering both sides of these very... Why are we not considering both sides of these very important issues? We're being forced to accept one-sided views. We are weak to the lies, and they're dangerous to our children. Stop protecting a false narrative and protect our children. It's your duty. COVID measures were never about saving lives, they're about destroying them. Just like it's being rolled out in other parts of the world, we know COVID is the pretext to ushering in a two-tiered social credit system and digital currency. Educate yourselves and make sure you're on the right side of history. Please activate your conscience and do the right thing. At a very minimum, join parents and resist these insane, dangerous mandates. Return the government funds and pivot back to freedom of choice for all. If you can't do that, then it's best you resign. Justice for the children will come. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Good evening. Desiree Langavalt, Wall Township. I would like to start with some positive decisions that our district has made in the past year. A letter was sent out to the parents in August with the intention to have masks optional in September. Our district chose against testing and vaccine stance on school property. Wall made sure our children had in-school learning versus virtual learning. After-school extracurricular activities are happening since September. I'm thankful for all these things, but it's not enough. If you're on any Board of Education, the superintendent, a parent, or a teacher, it is your job to advocate for our children and to protect them from guidelines that harm them. To say our hands are tied or every district works in a different way cannot continue to be the excuse. There are a few actions other districts have been taking, and Wall can join this movement as well. Our district can speak out the intention that masks will be optional after the executive order expires. You can choose to not follow the guidelines of the Department of Health that creates medical segregation between vaccinated and vaccine-free children, like other towns have done, and the same with quarantining. Remember, these are guidelines given by the Department of Health and not part of the mandate. There is room for change and improvement here. With $18 million in the bank, Wall can pay back the ESSER fund, or at least pay part of it back, so that your hands are not tied to these guidelines and that harm our children. You can write our legislature or the State Board of Education urging them to withdraw from the National Board of Education. This is something more and more states are doing because they have enough of these federal mandates being imposed on us. Our district can start questioning why we are still using the PCR test, while the CDC has come out to say that this test does not differentiate between the common cold, the flu, and COVID. So if this is the case, what does that really mean? How many kids have unnecessarily quarantined for the past two years? It is our duty to show all of our children that we are fighting for them, so that one day, our kids can teach their children to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else for a public comment?
Hello, Jennifer Spear, Wall Township. Town Hall, that's all I'm here for tonight. Everything else is just kind of fallen by the wayside, but if we could get that town hall going and have it happen sooner than later, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Betsy Karonsky, I live in Wall Township. Yeah, maybe if Mr. Nassar could give an update on when that town hall's going to be? He's the one that has been mentioning that there's going to be one. So if he can give an update tonight, I think everybody that's here and watching at home will be interested in knowing who's going to be there, and if Mr. Smythe will be there, and Ms. Athena Cornell, and which Board members will be there. She did go over about mask optional in September. I think what Mr. Adenizio does is he talks a big game, and it's all political, and then, you know, it's to really try and get maybe some incoming students to come in here and pay, and then, once you're in here, then they change the rules. So, you know, that's kind of what you did last year with going for a half-day after, you know, everybody else was going a full day in the area, and then hid it from the public and took your orders from the union, and you didn't really care about the students. You're writing that down? Good, Mr. Adenizio. I see you're writing it down.
I'll wait to correct you.
I'd like to know, I did ask this at the last meeting, who decided to offer the assailants $18,000? Was that the law firm, Athena Cornell, Mr. Scorillo's law firm? Who came up with that? And have you offered other students the privilege of $18,000 a year to go to their school of choice, whether if they were any of the victims or anyone else? If you could answer that tonight, I did ask it last week. I have been going over attendance calendars for Mr. Smythe and Dr. Handerhand, and I noticed that Dr. Handerhand has accumulated 138 days, and I don't see all these days in her contract. So, Ms. Athena Cornell, if you could let me know who that should be reported to? Because she doesn't have extended leave in her contract for 35 days. She was given 35 days of sick days, and I see that in there, but she was not given another 35. So, how she's accumulated 138 days, if she left tonight, she could... There's only 99 school days left. So, where are you coming up with these numbers? And Mr. Smythe, he seems to be taking off whenever he likes, and he just doesn't even count it if he takes off between Christmas and New Year's. He has an illegal contract online, and I'd like to know...
Ms. Cross, it's not an illegal contract. We've gone over this numerous times.
Yeah, put it in writing, Mr. Adenizio. Ms. Cornell, I'd like to know...
You can't stand here and just tell lies.
It's my time to talk.
It's your time if you tell facts. If you want to lie, you can't speak.
You can tell your lies after.
We don't tell lies.
Ms. Athena Cornell, if you could let me know who this should be reported to? Is it the prosecutor's office, Commission of Investigation? But there's an illegal contract online that was not Board-approved. Mr. Lester Richens also agreed with me. I met him in October, Ralph, so you can talk to him. The Board never approved that contract in public, and nobody ever gave Mr. Smythe off between Christmas and New Year's, like he seems to be taking off and not accounting for it. So, why don't you let Mr. Smythe answer the question, Ralph?
Ms. Cross?
I'd like to know... This is my time. Stop the clock, and then you can talk.
I thought you just wanted me to answer the question.
Stop the clock, and then you can do it, right? Put five seconds back on the clock, you can talk at the end. I'd also like to know, I did see in the attorney bills that a question was asked if the football players all lived in Wall or if they paid tuition. And I'm going to Oprah that response that you gave, because I think it's very important, because we're hearing some of the players, or one in particular, didn't live in Wall. So, if he didn't live in Wall, what was he doing going to school here if he wasn't paying? So, that was written in. We paid the attorney X amount of dollars to research it, and I'd like the response. And I've asked this, I think, November, December, January, and I'd like a response tonight. I'm still waiting to hear what legal briefs Ms. Cornell used to decide that I could take the seat on the Board of Ed. I've got nothing. So here we are, another month later, with nothing. So, if you have something, send it to me. I'd also like to know, Ms. Cornell, why my son's picture was in your reply brief? I've asked this question before, and is this what parents have to expect in Wall? If they don't like the parent, they will go after your family and go after your children. So, Ms. Cornell, if you could answer that tonight, I would appreciate it, because I didn't appreciate Mr. McKeever laughing about it on the phone with the judge. Mr. Hall, I'm still waiting. You were going to get back to me. You were telling everybody, you're getting back on the interest. I'd like to know. And how much is the referendum?
That was asked and answered at length at a previous meeting.
If... Don't use my time.
Thank you.
On the referendum, I'd like to know how much money...
All right, Ms. Cross, your time is up. Thank you.
How much money is the referendum?
Your time is up. Thank you.
Answer the question before we leave. How much is the referendum you're looking for that will never pass in Wall Township? Thank you.
Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, we will close public comment. Ms. Cornell, could you, and I know this has been explained before, could you please explain why Ms. Cross's child's picture was on a document?
Ms. Cross's child's picture is her profile picture on her Facebook account, and so when... Excuse me. When a post is made, the picture is repeated over and over and over again in the public domain. As part of some litigation, Ms. Cross inappropriately provided a link to a hearing without notifying the court in advance. That link was posted on her Facebook page with the picture of her child, and she is referenced many times here. So, it was in the public domain. It was brought to the court's attention because the link was appropriately... Inappropriately published. Thank you.
You had your time, Ms. Cross.
Yep. With regard to some of the other issues that were brought up today, I think we've addressed this before, but there's no correlation between receipt of ESSER funds and having to comply with a mask mandate. That's very straightforward with regard to...
And just to be clear, because we've talked about this before, we've received zero money as a school district that has anything to do with mask mandates. The Governor's Executive Order, whether it's an executive order because of a blizzard or an executive order because he feels masks should be worn, we don't receive any money. There's never been any money offered. Correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
And that will... We are monitoring the situation in the event that the Governor takes some action before the expiration of the current executive order, which is 281. So, we don't have any information on that currently, but it will come. With regard to Mr. Smythe's contract, the Executive County Superintendent approved that contract as required on June 9th, 2021. The Board of Education approved the contract in its public meeting on June 15th, 2021.
Ms. Cross, you already spoken. Could you please go sit down? Because we as a Board don't feel comfortable with you standing there.
With regard to questions regarding student matters, the Board has responded on that very consistently.
Please go back to your seat.
And that student matters are confidential and can't be discussed in a public forum.
Unbelievable.
Lastly, with regard to Ms. Cross's reference to Oprah as the excuse used for declining the seat, the current case law does not support the position because the issue at hand is attorney's fees for purposes of an Oprah complaint. The law is very clear that that does not provide an automatic bar to being seated on a Board of Education for purposes of a conflict. Excuse me. So, it'd also be noted that there was a complaint last meeting with regard to deciding who should be appointed in a vacancy based on gender. Of course, the Board doesn't use gender as the criteria for any appointment. And I believe... I believe that may be all the issues that we can speak to at the moment.
Excuse me. Just one point of clarification. The ESSER funds, are they state or federal funds? Thank you.
It's both. A combination. But again, whether it's federal or state, none of them have anything to do with the Governor's Executive Order, and the federal government hasn't given us any orders to follow its recommendations, but we take our recommendations from the local health department. Dr. Hendrian?
Thank you, Mr. Adenizio. I do have something that I would like to address regarding the quarantine data with respect to close contact. I apologize, I thought I responded, but I do apologize for that. With respect to close contact and quarantine and positive cases coming out of the quarantines, the district is not keeping this data. So, but I will tell you that gratefully, I will tell you just from gleaning over the numbers that I have for the last 18 months or so, students... So, the majority of students clearly are not positive following a quarantine. So, I do know that... I can say that with a broad brush just from gleaning the data. Additionally, with respect to... There is some mention about the August 3rd letter at this meeting and the meeting prior. The August 3rd letter that I wrote indicating that masks would be optional, that was written in the current landscape at the time, the numbers. Our numbers in early August were terrific, and I welcome... I welcome the opportunity to pen that letter with the health data to support that. I wish to recycle it, update it, when the health data is favorable. I am very pleased to share that our health data right now is trending in a positive direction. Our COVID numbers and quarantines are very high in December. They... We came out of the holidays high, but you'll notice that our numbers are coming down. And I am incredibly optimistic about this posit... I'll say our trend right now, which is certainly positive to all of us. And I have been doing a lot of reading, a lot of researching, and this absolutely... Current practices are absolutely being reviewed. I am... I sit up here at every meeting, and I certainly listen to what is being said, and please know that there is a lot of research that is taking place with very point of views, because that is how I like to address issues through really multiple perspectives. So, with that, I am cautiously optimistic, and I look forward to the health data landscape that we were... That we had this summer, and I'm hopeful that the data is going to come a lot... You know, I would love to see it faster than the summertime. So, with that, I think... Mr. Adenizio, I think Mr. Nassar wanted to share something?
Yep.
Can I just interrupt for one moment, just for purposes of clarification? If we recall, the end of last school year, June 28th, the road forward came out and talked about masks being optional and that additional guidance would be provided prior to the start of the school year. Unfortunately, that additional guidance came out on August 4th, which then mandated masks. So, in terms of the change in position, that was directed from not only the Department of Education, but also Governor Murphy, as we know.
And Mr. Adenizio?
Yes, Mr. Smythe.
Only because I've called out a number of times, the statement with regard to Mr. Smythe taking days whenever he wants is wholly inaccurate. Any days that are entitled to me under my contract need to be submitted and approved by a supervisor before I'm able to take such days, with the exception of sick days. I did not give myself any additional holidays or vacation days. Those days are included in my contract, which is, again, inaccurately or incorrectly stated as being illegal. My contract is approved in the same manner as every other non-represented employee in the district. So, the statement that my contract is illegal... It's interesting that only my contract is illegal and not every other non-represented employee in the district's contract is illegal. With the one exception, it's that my contract, as well as superintendent and then the assistant superintendent, has to be approved by the county executive superintendent each year, which it was approved by the county executive superintendent. which it was approved by the county executive superintendent. So the statement that my contract is illegal is inaccurate. The statement that I take days whenever I want is inaccurate and incorrect. And with regard to, again, you know, asking for case law, taking a seat on the Board of Education based on the November election and the results that were certified, I sent five letters, five emails with correspondence with directives as far as what needs to be done in order to take the seat on the Board of Education with regard to obtaining a criminal background check. I also offered the opinion that the board obtained from their counsel that the current lawsuit does not preclude Ms. Cross from sitting on the Board of Education. I don't know why there's a reason or a need to order to cite case law. The position of the Board of Education was that you can sit on the board. You know, everybody thought that the Board of Education would not take that position, and that's exactly the position that was taken. If it became an issue in the future, okay, take the seat on the Board of Education and resign. That did not happen. In fact, and also I was accused of putting the name on the agenda, and it should never have been on the agenda. I put everyone's name that was elected to the Board of Education on the agenda, and I inquired from each, do you plan on accepting the seat?
First time ever you did.
Ms. Cross, please stop yelling out. You already had your time.
However, Ms. Cross did not respond and didn't let us know one way or the other. So the statement that we should not have included her name, hey, had she advised us that she was not going to accept the seat, well, that would have been up for consideration, and maybe we wouldn't have put the name on. However, there was no communication. I receive an Oprah request every other day, however, and when I ask a question in response to the seat that she was elected to, I receive no response. And again, with regard to the photo, that was a, that was posted on multiple public websites, and it was a snapshot taken of the post with the avatar was the photo in question. So it wasn't as though there was an eight-by-ten glossy submitted to the court, it was a snapshot of a post that was put on multiple social media sites. So I find it ironic that we're concerned about it going to the county court, but we're not concerned about it being posted over multiple public websites.
Thank you, Mr. Smythe. Ms. Cross, this is a meeting, it's not yelling out, and it was a post that you posted. So let's be clear about that.
Who sent it to the attorney, Ralph?
Point of order.
Enough, Ms. Cross. Please go sit down. Ms. Cross, please sit down. How come you're the only one that comes to a meeting that can't follow the rules? And there's seats. We don't feel comfortable with you this close.
This close? I'm halfway back.
Mr. Nasr?
So with regard to the town hall, we're putting together lists of potential subjects. There are a lot of people that would want to have a variety of subjects discussed, so we need to make sure that we can make our town halls as productive as possible. That includes looking at the different formats, whether it's digital or in person, and making sure that there's proper facilitation of those town halls. The process is still in the planning and formulation phase. Like I said, this is something that we want to make sure we do right, because we recognize that communication with the public is essential. So it may take a little longer, but it's going to be done right when the time comes. With regard to, and to Mrs. Cross's question about the calendars, I'm not going to speak specific to an employee, because I'm not able to in this forum, but what I can say is that the document that was posted online from Mrs. Cross's Oprah request is a 12-month calendar with balances from the Systems 3000 software. It's our accounting software, similar to QuickBooks for people in the private sector. That is a separate mechanism, and I'm going to try not to get too technical, from the actual timekeeping thing itself that people call into, that's called AESOP, or frontline, I think it's called now. It's, it, they are two separate systems. One keeps an accounting within our accounting system, and the other keeps a total of the balances. The correlation between the two are not the same. There's a reconciliation that has to happen on a regular basis to make sure that the data from one system is reflective in the other system. In this case, some of the info can seem duplicative, and it is something that we're going to talk about in our FNF committee meetings, in trying to make it easier for the public to decipher what the actual information is reflected in the Systems 3000 report. So it was a valid question on the surface. It seems that there are more days in this certain situation, but...
How many more days?
Please stop yelling out.
I don't want to speak specifically to an employee, but there are, I can't speak specifically to it, it's just sitting right next to me. The, what I can say is that the categories in AESOP don't always match up with the ones in Systems 3000. So if there is a situation out of the ordinary for days within a contract, there may not be a direct, you know, there's like a little drop-down menu, you select the type of day, there may not be a direct correlation between the two. That's why there's human intervention needed to reconcile one versus the other. Again, I'm trying not to make this too boring here.
No, you've done a pretty good job, Mr. Nasr.
But there is a category there that may be duplicative, and hence, we need to make sure that, you know, these results are audited every year. Everything is audited to make sure it's on the up and up, and that there's internal checks and balances to make sure that if there are conditions attached to those days, such as a payout under the requisite laws, that it's not overpaid. So I, that's about all I can say about it. I would say, try to Oprah it again in the future, because then a more accurate accounting will be presented.
Adam, can I just, can you, can we say that the document that was Oprah-ed overstates, is overstating the number? I mean, can we say that? So the numbers that Ms. Cross was throwing out, while we can't confirm, again, when individual thing, we can say that that report is overstating the amount of days that that particular person had based on that report, when the AESOP report would tell you a different story. Unfortunately, again, and this is, this is not a good look, because this shouldn't happen, and we shouldn't be in this position. So we need to figure out how to get those systems to work together, so that when a member of the public does request a report, that we're giving them accurate information. Now, it's accurate in the sense that it came from the report, and so therefore, you know, it's fine, but I do think, like you said, we need, this is something that, to be fair, we need to work on to make sure that we iron out this problem, so that we don't end up with this situation and have this become a story when there's no story to it, it's just a matter of, like I said, you know, something was duplicated, and it kind of made something look different than actual fact.
Absolutely, and Mr. Hall and I have had discussions surrounding the general way things are presented, because sometimes it is more difficult for the layman without additional context to understand and read into certain documents that are Oprahed. Ultimately, I think we all have the mindset that we want things to be as easy to understand without there being this type of exchange. You should just be able to understand it by looking at it. And this is a perfect example of one of those frustrating scenarios, where you may see it as one, we have the additional context, we see it and understand it differently, and we have to explain it. We can do a better job in presenting the information, and I think that's our obligation as board members and as members of the community, to make sure that it's as transparent as possible, and, you know, continue to work toward making that a goal in general. So, you know, that's really all I'm going to say on it, I know. So, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Just two quick things as well. This meeting and last meeting, there were comments made that we're taking orders from unions, which is the absolute furthest thing from the truth. If our teachers' union and administrator union did not work with us and do everything in their power to keep schools open, we would have been in situations like Chicago, where teachers were walking out. Our unions wanted to come back, they wanted to come back safely, which also encompasses the children coming back safely. We, as a district, had an obligation to do that, and we did do that. Our teachers and administrators during this whole thing have gone above and beyond covering classes when teachers are out sick because of COVID, and not coming back to us, and, you know, nitpicking and wanting the world. So our teachers and administrators, our whole staff here, has been probably beyond incredible during this whole thing, and I think it's very unfair that people paint them in a different color, because that's not the truth, and I wanted to say that. And also, piggybacking off what Adam said, when we do have a town hall, parents will be notified when we're going to have it, and our plans, one of the plans will be to do it school by school, so we can hear directly issues maybe affecting those particular schools. But we're working on that, and that's more to come. With that, could we have a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. San Filippo, any discussion? All in favor?
We agree.
All right, okay. We will, we're going into executive session for number three on the agenda for letters A, G, and H. No action will be taken, and we will be adjourning from executive session. Everyone have a good evening.
Something on the agenda that Brian gave out.